Good evening. Today is Monday, June 2nd, 2025. We are at the Green Ladel and we'll call the meeting to order at 5:33 PM and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. We will start introductions with Councilor Harriman.
Scott Harriman, City Council Representative to the School Committee.
Donna Gland, Ward 7.
Megan Heard, Ward 6.
Iman Osman, Ward 5.
Craig Sharpentier, Ward 4.
Elizabeth Thimes, Ward 3.
Janet Bowden, Ward 2.
Phoenix McLaughlin, Ward 1.
Megan Parks at Large.
Jake Langley, Superintendent.
Karen Poccat, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you. The Agenda Item Number 3 is to receive and potentially vote on the nomination for Benjamin Allen for Assistant Principal Position at Montello.
Good afternoon. I'm excited to have Ben Allen in front of you all today. We're really excited because Ben, you might not know, actually started his student teaching at Montello. So, early on in his career, he came and was with us for a time. He's since been a teacher at Farwell and Connors and has really built his skillset in working on schoolwide goals, was part of the leadership team, and really developing, deepening his understanding of instructional practices as well, and some of his work as a classroom teacher. And he's bringing a lot of skill that we're excited to have at our building. We think he'll be the right balance of support and structure that our students will need to make growth across the board in all areas. So, we're really excited to have him here. And I don't know, Ben, you want to say a few words?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I'm very honored to be nominated for this position for the past seven years. I've served Lewiston Public Schools in a variety of capacities, and I hope to do so for years to come. As Tiffany said, I started at Montello as a student teacher and a long-term sub, and I'm just really excited to return there. I'm really excited to return and to help contribute to the mission and vision of Montello Elementary School. So, thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments, motions from the committee? Member Bowden.
I'll start with a question. Where do you currently teach?
Connors First Grade.
Connors First Grade, okay. So, Connors is going to be missing out on our first-grade teacher.
Deb's on it.
Oh, I can see Deb back there, like... So, I would also like to make the motion then to approve Benjamin Allen for the Assistant Principal Position at Montello Elementary.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Congratulations! Agenda Item Number 4 is the Consent Agenda. Are there any items on the Consent Agenda that members would like set aside? Seeing none, the Consent Agenda is adopted. Agenda Item Number 5 is Public Input. Members of the public may address the School Committee for up to three minutes on non-agenda items now and on agenda items later. Speakers must adhere to the Public Comment Policy, which is available at the back of the room and on the Lewiston Public Schools website. These meetings exist to conduct school committee business. The purpose of Public Comment is to share thoughts on school and educational matters. Committee members and school staff will not reply during this time. Comments must be directed to the Chair and be civil. By law, comments may not pertain to specific staff or students. Comments about individuals must be directed privately to the appropriate LPS staff member. Student privacy must be maintained. The public comment period is 30 minutes unless extended due to unusual circumstances. Priority goes to Lewiston residents and parents, students or employees of Lewiston Public Schools. Before starting, please state your name, town or city of residence, and affiliation to LPS. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on a non-agenda item?
Luke Jensen, Ward 2, 4th grade teacher McMahon. Sorry, it's been a long day. Forced voice. I guess very frustrated. There are a lot of issues in this school district that are just flat-out not getting addressed. I mean, I was here months ago and nothing's happened since then. I started my, you know, bringing up issues in November, nothing's happened since then. It's only gotten worse. There's no sign of anything being addressed. I was told to go through the union, but the union leadership doesn't want to bring anything to you guys unless we do a survey, and no teachers are interested in doing surveys. Brought it stuff to administration, nothing's happened. I'm literally at the end, I'm at the end of my wits. I have nothing else I can do other than speaking to you guys. The system that we have in Lewiston is not working for our students. We're creating a pipeline for gang activity. You start the students off in elementary school. We have a grading system that does not engage them in their learning. They don't care about their learning. Parents are not involved in it either. It's hard even, like, giving them as a teacher grades, because a lot of time, I don't think the grades are fair. So, they go through this system year after year, not caring about their grades, not developing the critical thinking skills they need. They essentially destroy most hope they have for a future themselves by us not investing in them. And then it gets to the point where they're 16, 17 years old. College is not an opportunity. They can go into the workforce and make maybe 17, 18 an hour, have to live at home until they're 25. So, what options do they have other than doing gang activity? So, I just, I mean, there's so much of the nitty-gritty I'd love to get into with you guys that I can't talk about in just three minutes here, but the point I want to make is that our system is failing our students, and it's failing them incredibly badly. And there's just common sense things that should be addressed that just nobody's addressing. And I just, I don't even know what to say at this point. I'm resigning my position at the end of the year for financial reasons. I just can't continue, but I just, someone's got to stand up for our kids here. Like, I think about the students I have that are graduating from the Act. They got, they passed the access test. They're getting out of ML. They're still getting twos in their report cards because of the arbitrary system that we have. Shouldn't we be giving them threes if they're graduating out of the access test? It's a really hard test. I mean, and just as teachers, just the stress level is ridiculously high. And again, no one's advocating for us. So, I'm just gonna kind of end it here, because I don't have the energy to keep going anymore. But if you guys are expecting teachers to come to you or something to come to you, there's no medium for us to get our thoughts out to you guys right now. There's no one I can go to other than me speaking to you directly for you guys to get my concerns. So, you guys have, like, contact me anyway if you want to. I'd be more than happy to sit down and talk with you guys in depth. At this point, I'm gonna advocate for my kids. I don't really, you know, care about anything else. The kids deserve better. They do. And I just, I'm utterly disappointed in the lack of action that has come from this district. And we've got to stop having the conversation of what can we do to make things better? What can we do to improve scores or improve lives? We know what we can do. We're not doing it.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, we will move on to Agenda Item Number 6 to receive Lewiston Public Schools' recognitions.
So, we have a number tonight, because we have, one is a guest recognition, but also we have some folks who have retired. So, I think I want to start with, I could see Deb in my line of sight. Deb, do you want to start?
So, I have some hiring to do. But I do want to say, congratulations. I think Ben stepped out. So, Montello, you gained a Connors Champion. So, I'm happy for you and for Ben and for Montello. So, I do have six staff, yes, six retiring, but three are here tonight. So, can I start with Susan Mischu? Can she come up? I don't know. I'm gonna, I've never done this before, so I'm gonna call her up. I don't know who this one is. Come on up. Just put you on the spot. Have a few words. Okay. So, I hope I do this, do justice by everyone retiring here. So, Sue is someone who truly loves what she does. Her passion for working with students showed, shows in everything that she does every day at Connors. She's always eager to make a difference in a child's life, and without a doubt, she did just that. But one of the things I will miss most about Sue, and she just did it this evening when we were sitting together, she'll stop by my office and share stories of students, past and present. And in those moments, it was clear on how much pride she took in the work that she did every day and how deeply she cares for her students. Her dedication, warmth, and sense of purpose makes her a valued member of our school family. And if I know Sue like I think I do, she's not done. I suspect that she, that we haven't seen the last of her impact in this community. Once a Connors Champion, always a Connors Champion. So, congratulations, and I wish you the best of luck. And you, do you really have to retire?
No.
You're welcome.
So, I just, what we'd like to do, we do have certificates for everybody here, but we'd like to get them also all together for a picture at the end. So, I'll pass these out as we go.
And then I have James Handy. Come on up. Hello, hello. So, it is my honor to speak here for, on behalf of James. I've worked with James again just this past year, and in that short time, your dedication and care for our students and community have left an impression. You demonstrate a strong commitment to our students' success, often stepping up to support students who need assistance. Your ability to listen to every student and engage with them on an individual level really sets a standard for the empathy and kindness that you show every day. Students really do look up to you. They look up to Mr. Handy. And Mr. Handy would share stories, experiences, and his knowledge from day to day, and you definitely left an imprint in the student's heart that will last a lifetime. He's served as a special education ed tech at Connors Elementary for the past four years, and your impact on the school community has been deeply felt. And the pride in the work that you do is clearly shown, with a smile every single day that I see at arrival, every single day, always looking for his students and always making sure if we saw them, get off their bus or their van for the morning. And I know that Lewiston holds a special place in Jim's heart. You're an, you are an active member in our community. You served as Chair of Healthy Andrew Scoggan and as a Board Member of Senior Plus. Your commitment to public service is remarkable. 18 years as a member of the Lewiston School Committee. I got that right, right?
That's right.
And recently completed two terms in the Maine House of Representatives. So, you've worked really hard to get where you are today, and I'm very grateful for the time that I was able to work alongside you. Your time, energy, and heart that he has shared with Connors will leave an impact in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Steven Bello. So, now another one. Okay. Steve has served in many roles across our district. Most recently is our gifted and talented teacher since 2016. Before that, he worked as an instructional coach and a 5th grade teacher, always bringing passion and care into everything that he does. He's also a National Board Certified Teacher. But beyond the classroom, Steve has a longstanding and valued member of our District Certification Committee, contributing his time and expertise to ensure that we uphold the higher standards for our students and our staff. One of the most impactful roles has been as a new staff facilitator at Connors, where he's offered mentorship, guidance, and a warm welcome to our new teachers. Steve has a genuine commitment to supporting educators and doing what's best for students. Now, anyone who knows Steve knows how proud he is of Connors. I remember our many talks up and down the hall when I started being principal. I could just see the pride every day, and I know it means a lot to you. Connors means a lot to you. Every morning, we hear his cheerful voice. It was the best duty I gave Steve, passing out over 750 breakfasts to our champions with a smile, a joke, or a cheer to start their day on a high note. His sense of humor and positive energy are a part of what made Connors such a special place. So, thank you, Steve. I am done, I promise. I have three more retiring, but they are not here tonight. I'm not, won't say words for them, but it's Kathy Pratt, Jim Cartwright, and Paula Aldrich.
Yeah, just as a reminder, we do want to give you certificates and recognize you all together at the end. So, if you could please stick around. Who's my next line of sight here? Tiffany?
I actually don't have any staff who could attend today, but we do have Colleen Swanson, who is retiring this year. And I just wanted to share that she has done amazing work as a multilingual teacher in our building. She's one of the funniest people I know, but you would never know it just meeting her. She's very introverted and doesn't say too, too much, but says the right thing at the right time to make everyone laugh. But she, she's wonderful with students. This has been a second career for her. She's really just been such a part of our community, and we hate to see her go, but we hope she comes back as a sub or in some other way where we can still have ties, because, you know, who, she should be celebrating her retirement, and we're very, very thankful that she gets to do that. But if we can have some touchpoints, we hope we can do that as well, because she's just such a valued educator. So, to Colleen, if you're watching, congratulations and best of luck.
Principal Byrd? Principal Byrd? Dr. Byrd?
Good evening. I have three retiring this year. Two of them are not here, but I have Diane McDougall here with me. So, it's been a pleasure having Diane as part of the Farwell Elementary Community for over the past two years. While her time with us has been short, the impact she has had on students and staff alike is lasting and deeply appreciated. Diane has brought an incredible sense of calm, care, and commitment to her role as an ed tech. Her ability to build trusting relationships with students has made a meaningful difference in academic and emotional growth. Whether supporting students one-on-one or assisting in the classroom, Diane's presence has consistently brought reassurance and positivity. Her quiet strength, patience, and kindness not only have gone unnoticed, and her contributions have enriched the daily experience for so many of our learners. Although we are sad to see her go, we celebrate Diane's retirement with gratitude and admiration. She has left a mark on Farwell that will continue to resonate in our hearts of the students she has supported and the colleagues she has worked alongside. We wish her all the best as she enters her next chapter filled with well-deserved rest, joy, and new adventures.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bryant?
Good evening. I have two staff members who are retiring this year. One cannot be here. That is Celine Dougal. This is actually her second time retiring from Lewiston Public Schools. So, she, you know, had the celebration the first time and decided to forego this one. But this is Ramona Sutherland, affectionately known as Mona. I asked her how long exactly she's been teaching, and she said 41 years, but she wants you to know that she started teaching when she was 12, so she's really not that old. You're welcome. Mona has been a math teacher at Lewiston Middle School, had been a math teacher for nine years. Prior to that, she taught math and science at Wyndham for about 32 years. So, after 41 years of inspiring minds and shaping futures, it's hard to put into words the gratitude and admiration that we feel. You have a passion for math and science, and this shows in your unwavering belief in students' potential. You have been known as the teacher who holds high expectations for student behavior, and we very much appreciate that. You didn't just teach math for us, though. You taught resilience, curiosity, and confidence. So, congratulations on a well-earned retirement. She left us at the beginning of November, I believe. October?
September.
Oh, September. End of September. So, may this next chapter bring you the same joy you've given to all of us over the several years.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, I couldn't see you. I was like...
All right. So, I have just one person retiring. I have Donna Norcross here, and I want us to take a moment to really celebrate. She has spent her whole career teaching in Lewiston, 40 years. Started at Montello as a Chapter 1 teacher. We don't even have those anymore. And then spent 31 years at Martell, teaching 2nd grade. And she's finishing her career at McMahon, where she taught reading recovery for eight years. She also went to elementary school at McMahon, so she's kind of made her full circle and is able to retire right where she went to elementary school. We are going to miss her. Her students are going to miss her. Her colleagues are going to miss her. She has served our children so well. She meets every kid where they're at and guides them with love, patience, and kindness. She's just, every kid, I listen to her. I've seen her teach, and she's just so calm and patient, and her kids just gain so much from her. So, we are so blessed to have had her, and we will miss her. She doesn't have to come back and sub. I told her she earned this. She needs to take it. She may come back and volunteer, but she doesn't need to keep working for us, because she's done a lot for us, and we're very thankful for her and her commitment to Lewiston.
And not quite a retirement, but almost feels like one. Suzanne, would you come up to talk about? It's Petrie.
So, this is the difference between a teacher and a non-teacher. I have no notes. I prepared no speech. This is purely from the hip, and it was a surprise today, so bear with me. But Celeste has spent 25 years here with LPS in various roles, payroll, human resources. She has a lot of institutional knowledge that she's taking with her, but she has been gracious enough to share that with our department in trying to prepare us for her departures as much as possible. She's not technically retiring, but she's not planning to do anything nearly as cool as work with us when she leaves here. So, we do plan some trips, maybe to South Carolina. She has a pool in her unit that has like a lazy river, and I'm like all about that. So, so as jealous as I am, and as much as we hate to see her go, we really do wish her the best. She has given her heart and soul to LPS, and the HR department is going to have a huge hole in it for, for the foreseeable future. But fortunately, we all have her cell phone number, so, so life will be okay. But, but thank you, Celeste, for everything you do, and we will absolutely miss you. She just told me that she hates me, and she's...
So, I'm going to talk about somebody who's here, and you'll have the pleasure of seeing everything that's so wonderful about this gentleman in a minute. So, Greg Boardman, you would come on up? You were hoping you were gonna get out of it, didn't you? Greg Boardman has been our elementary and for a time middle school, but mostly elementary strings teacher for 30 years now? 31 years here in Lewiston Public Schools. And anyone who's in the strings community in Maine knows him as an absolute icon. So, for him to spend 31 years working with our students and bringing his love and passion for music to, again, emotional, because every time I talk about Lewiston kids, I do, to bring that to our students and for us to have him here has just been a gift and, and one that we will, we will truly miss as he, as he moves on. Greg does so much in the community. There were times toward the end of COVID when we were all just, you know, cold and just feeling down, and we walked up to the cathedral, and there was like Tuesday morning strings and in the community, bringing individuals from outside the community into a space that really served as a respite. So, that's one of those memories that I have of Greg beyond all of the work that he does with students as well. So, you know, join me in congratulating Greg on an amazing career, not just as a musician, but most of all, as someone who's been incredibly dedicated and passionate about our students and bringing music to them through strings. And again, in just a moment, you'll get to, to see just a snapshot of what he does along with our other music educators.
All right. Did I hit all the spots? Yes, okay. All right. So, if everyone who was mentioned could come up, we have certificates here. We'd like to take a group picture, if we could. And the last recognition we have for this evening is for Alyssa Roman, who was recognized as the Teresa Sampson Women's Business Leadership winner this year through the Lewiston Auburn Chamber. So, Alyssa, I don't know if you want to say a few words, but I know you had a recognition recently at the Chamber Gathering, but we wanted to take a moment to thank you for all your work you've done for us here.
Thank you, guys, very much. It was really, honestly, a surprise and an honor to be not only nominated for the award, the Teresa Sampson Business Award. I also find it ironic that she owned Hudson Bus Lines for as many years as she did, and she is a very sweet lady, so I was very pleased I was able to meet her. But I was telling Jake, even as we were there, the hard part is, is this is my job, and I'm very happy to continue service for Lewiston, whether it's feeding kids or transporting them. So, to be recognized for my work was really, I appreciated it. So, thank you.
Agenda Item Number 7 is to receive an update on the Music Grant and a presentation from some of our students.
Sure. Sorry about that. Greg, I'm happy to do an introduction here, a brief introduction. And we, we have some amazing instrumentalists here with us tonight to share some music. Following the performance, myself and Tiffany will be discussing a bit of the funding that we've been using to support both string and band instruments. So, first, please, please enjoy. to support both string and band instruments. So first, please, please enjoy. Thank you so much, students. Thank you. Thank you, Zach. Thank you, Greg. So I wanted to follow up with some information, just sharing some information and outcomes on a Title IV instrument project that we have been implementing over the last, or the entirety really, of this school year. The the project itself was inspired by conversation with building principals around access to instruments for students. We had students who wanted to play, and we had barriers we needed to overcome. So that was really the the seed of this project. We found that financial barriers were certainly one of our biggest hurdles. We had students, some students renting instruments or wanting to and not being able to participate for that reason. And we had a small inventory of instruments that we owned as a district. So we were trying to address those very real pieces, so we can have more participation at the student level and and build a very engaging program for students. And we we used about $130,000 worth of Title IV funds. This is our supplemental ESEA federal funding stream. Allowability includes enhancing or expanding current music programs. And so that's that's the why it fell within that funding source. In addition to participation, overall, we were really looking to engage students and increase attendance, really ultimately, by making sure we could offer this exciting opportunity for students. What we what we can report for outcomes, and this is continuing to grow, but we have seen over a 100% increase in the number of students playing a band instrument. And it was 108% increase on that student group. And we've seen an 85% increase in the number of students playing string instruments across the district. Additionally, we have seen a significant increase in parent engagement at our instrumental concerts. So we had a lot of good energy at our most recent recitals, really, right, concerts at our schools. Our plan is to continue funding and supporting this project to a different degree. This this first year was the big lift, purchasing many new instruments and supplies that were needed for the program. And our goal is to ensure we can repair and maintain the instruments over years to come. And that's part of a requirement for the grant as well. These are grant purchased instruments, so we will have that responsibility. And additionally, add new instruments to that inventory as we can. So we'll be having further conversation with our music teachers and instrument teachers to do just that. So for a little rundown of the items we purchased, it has included violins, violas, cellos, basses, chin rests, instrument stands, instrument storage, instrument racks, rosin replacement strings, and we paid for some repair. And for band, clarinets, flutes, trumpets, tubas, saxophones, ly trombones, cymbals, and and many, many other items to support the project. And I and I absolutely can't, before I pass it over to Montello, to talk about their Mr. Holland's Opus grant that they've, you know, gone even farther with for their instruments in their school building. I can't walk away without thanking Greg Boardman, Zach Lampron, who you just saw here, Carissa Nelson, who is in the space. Of course, the support of our building principals for this project and our district administration. And Peg Piscini, who who did a lot of the work on the administrative part for this project. So just really excited to share that update with you. And.
All right, you're seeing a lot of me today, but all good things. We are really excited to, well, thankful to have folks like Carissa on staff with us alongside Zach and Greg. They've really done some incredible work to build some musical foundations for students. The grant that we received that Jenny was talking about, those instruments actually follow students, I believe, as they continue on year to year. And one of the things that Carissa has talked with me about regularly is, and so what now? What do we do to support at the elementary levels to really build the foundations that kids need and build excitement for instruments? It's a it's a big lift to learn an instrument in elementary school. But that foundation is really essential when you're moving into middle school and high school programs. And to really have folks who are committed to the work in band. And so Carissa is somebody who always is thinking about how she can contribute to problem solving and thinking about what she can do to really open up access for our students. She she and Zach were actually in my office before we had gotten the original grant, saying, what can we do to to open up access? What is available? What what can we do to make sure that rent isn't a barrier to playing an instrument? So I can't say more about Carissa and her efforts really beyond the teaching role, and she does that with very little downtime. She, you know, she teaches a full unified arts rotation and is is back to back with classes. And then on her spare time, thinking about how she can better our school and community. So thank you for all of that. After the second grant, after this first, sorry, grant was was received, Carissa brought up Mr. Holland's Opus Foundation and actually put in a lot of time and energy into securing us into the adopt a school program there. And so it was really hours of application materials, figuring out what would be needed, what's needed in our building in particular, from an elementary music standpoint, and also from an elementary band and string standpoint. So she collaborated with Zach and Greg. And, you know, one of the things I appreciate about Chris is she's she's done whatever she can with the tools she's inherited over the years. She's been at Montello, how many years is it?
This is my eleventh.
Okay, eleventh. So it's been a long time, but she she hasn't asked for much. She's used what she can to really develop a wonderful music program at our school. But this really added a layer of depth for our students. She put a lot of work into, and she could talk about what the grant will do. But she really expanded access to what students are able to learn at younger developmental levels that will then support them in bands and strings programs. So with that, I'll let you speak more about the Mr. Holland's Opus.
Absolutely. So in the fall, we were fortunate to have one of the members of the Mr. Holland's Opus team reach out to us in Lewiston Public Schools. A few different schools were personally reached out to because there are some requirements for the the adopt a school program that have to do with Title I funding and a few other different requirements. And so we went through the whole process of of kind of seeing where we were at, where we'd like to go. And the support that we've received from our community has been really important because this is, in a similar vein, the Adopt a School Foundation is part of almost Donors Choose style, but they have agreements with different instrument manufacturers to be able to get those instruments at a lower cost. So it goes a lot farther. We ended up with a grant of $16,500, but it was almost $22,000 worth of instruments that we were able to receive because they have such deep discounts with members of the instrument community. And so specifically, what we're going to be acquiring is a set of ORF instruments. Orf is really complicated, but boils down to a set of barred instruments in different sizes and different instrument tones. So some are made of wood, some are made of metal, from Glock and Spiel, Glock and Spiel, all the way up to bas metallophone, or down, actually, technically. And we are really excited to be receiving those, hopefully, here in the near future, which will, as Tiffany was talking about, really set our elementary students up to have that ensemble experience, to know what it sounds like to play my part and hear my part with these other parts. It's going to give them a really, really solid foundation to get into more programs like band and strings. With all of the amazing work that they did with our our grant last year, we still, we used every single instrument at Montello this year because our our kids are hungry, really, really hungry for music. And so having the opportunity, they used every single one. So in addition to the ORF instruments, we also were able to purchase five additional band instruments. I think it's four alto saxophones and a clarinet, as well as a 29-inch timpani. And if you know anything about timpani, they're on the more expensive end, so it was a good time to to get one of those to add to our school roster. One of the things that we're most excited about is with the Mr. Holland's Opus Foundation Adopt a School Program. We were the first in the state of Maine and one of the first 100 in the country to be able to be a part of this program. And I don't want to forget to mention that it, none of it would have been possible without the Lewiston Youth Activity Fund. They got us from where we are, which was great, all the way through fully funding our campaign. So they made a very sizable donation and really supported our students at Montello, as they have across many buildings over the years. So we're really excited at Montello and in Lewiston Public Schools and music, and we're we're growing. And any support we can get is, we're incredibly grateful for.
And I, Carissa is right. I mean, we are using all the instruments that we've received with with the grant and are excited to to build capacity there. We literally have to, I think I mentioned this before, have had to walk over instruments in classrooms to try to find a spot to sit when we're going in to observe because there are just so many around, and that's a good problem to have and one we're willing to problem solve. But I just wanted to leave you with a few words that Carissa has taught me through this process because she's been reaching out to folks trying to get this project funded, has actually had a radio spot in 93 One Coast, and has brought some students to play there to try to, you know, spread the word about this program. And one of the things she told me is just do it scared. And, you know, I said, y'all, you're being really brave this year, really practicing that bravery, and every time she said, just do it scared. So that's a lesson learned for me and one, you know, words of encouragement as we try new things to support our students. So thank you, Carissa, for all your efforts, and thanks for doing it scared.
Thanks.
Remember her?
Thank you. I actually had a couple of questions for Jenny, maybe, before you run away. So the amount, the 100 and, what is the total dollar amount?
It was 131,000.
So that was spread across all of our elementary schools?
Yes.
And then how is it decided on what school gets what? And how, you know what I mean? Is it just based on need? Like if some school's students are able to to pay to rent the equipment, then they're not, they're not given as much? Like, how is that all decided?
The instruments are assigned to a student who had interest in playing in either the strings program, the K6 strings program, or the K6 band program. So first, hopefully, student, most students were able to get their first choice in that. But it was really about that, really, for the ensuring we had the inventory to cover exactly what the students were hoping to play, and then we would need to build from there. And we do have a couple extras on the shelf, like ready for a student who decides to join. But the the number of students participating does vary from school to school. So our our teachers did that work, the inventory work. They wanted to create a balanced program as well, so that was part of the consideration of which instruments they would be buying. They wanted a balanced band ensemble and a balanced orchestra, so that had had some role in determining which instruments as well. But it was really that we needed more of everything in every elementary school. So does that help answer?
Yeah, so the money in the grant was just used for strings or
Or band.
Band, correct. And do the current music teachers teach those classes? Or is it like the kiddos get pulled and go somewhere else? Does someone come in? Like, how does that work? Like, it sounds like we're losing our strings instructor.
We have, Karen might be able to jump in on this, but we do have, or Sue's still here. We do have our general music classes during the day, but we do have students pulled out of class to participate in these programs. And some of our schools run after-school strings or bands, and I'm not sure if that's just Lewiston Middle School specific for after-school or? Thank you.
Now you get the people.
I'm not going to speak when someone who lives in here.
Oh, that's okay. Hi, everybody. How are you? Hi. So the question was, was when do when do kids get?
So like, who does the regular music teacher teach? Do the kids get pulled? Is it after school? Like, how does that work?
It's a little bit, it's a little bit of all those things. So I, so Greg and I pull kids for half an hour once a week from whatever they're in. We have to work around their schedules. It's very busy. And then we pull our second-year students for an ensemble lesson once a week as well for an hour after school. So those who can make it, transportation's a bit of an issue, but those who can make it come for an ensemble lesson once a week.
Okay. So I think this is amazing, and I think it's great. My only concern here is we have an elementary school who has not had a music teacher for the entire school year. So unfortunately, our McMahon students are, for the better word, lacking in that area, which I know there's nothing we can do there. But I don't know if there's any grant money or something that can be pushed to maybe make that position more appealing. Because like I said, our students are literally watching iPads during music class, which is not very beneficial to them. So yes, I think this is great, but I'm just wondering, like, obviously, there's a need for strings, but there's also a need for our general music teacher for those students who are not getting pulled out for strings or band. They're getting nothing this year. So I just want to make sure we're also like potential, and I'm sure you are looking at that. I just want to make sure we're still looking at that.
I am happy to speak to that if you want me to. Yeah, so the the grant was was worked on before, before we had that need for a music teacher at McMahon. All the money was received before any of that, any of that happened. So that's a totally separate, separate thing. We are, we've done interviews and looked at candidates, and we're still finding people that would be right for that position. Yep, so I'll start working on it. Yeah, of course.
Remember Boden?
Thank you. I just have some comments. Excuse me. I'm just very excited that it seems like our music programs are getting another boost because I know COVID really, really hit hard in this department. So I'm happy to see it. And, I mean, I I think I can speak for everyone here. I was rendered speechless at graduation Friday night when a young woman, a young graduate, got up to a keyboard and started playing and singing a song. And it really reminded me how much we are missing this in this school district. And, you know, I spent my winter going to basketball games at my daughter's college with a pep band who just, you know, lit that gym up with with the music that they played. And I would love to see that come back around because I I really think it's missing. So I'm super grateful for everyone who's had a part in this grant and is working towards this. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's a question maybe for Jenny or Tiffany or others. I'm just curious if there's anything you need from us, the school committee at this point, or community members, that you want to get the word out? Just if there's anything, we got to hear about the positive in terms of getting this grant together. But what's what's next that you might need from us?
Thank you for the support. I think moving forward, we we will be seeking out other grants potentially, and it could be something more like the Mr. Holland's Opus to keep it going. Our Title IV allowed us to do this heavy lift, really, as a one-time, a one-time big project. And we'll be able to carry that on to a smaller degree, again, the maintenance and the repair. So I I think that in the future, we want to keep this conversation going, and we want to support all of our elementaries to expand on what we've been able to do on this boost, and it really was a boost. And and yeah, just continue to support moving forward. Do you want to add to that at all?
Maybe Zach's going to say the same thing, but I would just add that if you have an instrument in good health or you know someone who does that is, you know, in an attic somewhere, willing to be donated. I think Zach is willing to receive, you know, any correspondence related to that, just so we can continue to to grow our collection. If you have anything.
Yeah, just one last thing. So this was a huge boost for our program. But the point was to send the instruments with the kids through school. So if we get 150 instruments and I send 50 a year in the middle school in two, two years, amount of instruments again. So we need to keep replenishing this well. Yeah. Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
I do have an instrument for you, so I'll connect afterwards.
Thank you.
And and please come to the instrument concerts if you. And, and please come to the instrument concerts if you can, um, to support our teachers and our students. And you'll be amazed at the parent and guardian representation you see at, at the event. This Thursday night.
Yes.
Yeah, Connors, excellent. This Thursday night at Connors.
Remember Ames, did you have your hand up?
I did. First to say, I think the young woman who sang also wrote that song. So I think they announced that she wrote it. Didn't she? Oh, it's a song. Never mind then. Her rendition, not her. Okay. Maybe that's what they said and I misunderstood. Sorry about that. All right. Well, never mind that sort of.
Remember Galant?
Hi. Wonderful, wonderful. Uh, my question is with the strings, um, I, I play the violin myself a little bit. But I know that there's quarter size and, and so if the violin, for example, follows the child and they outgrow that, do they get another size that fits them? Or how does that work? Once they, if they start out, I mean, little, little elementary ones, they just, actually, I probably could give that one to you. I had, I, I had it for my, one of my granddaughters, um, when, when I play and I thought she might take it up, but she's not interested. So. So I have a small, I think it's a quarter size. But that's my question is, is once they grow out of the, of that size?
We have the next size. So what we've done is purchase, uh, you know, several of the different sizes that we'd need so we could take care of that. Hopefully with the inventory I have, but to, to Zach's point, at, you know, the more students we attract to be participate, we're going to need to respond. Um, so we will just, we will be, you know, connecting and discussing that, you know, more than annually to, to prepare for the upcoming year. So, you know, again, it's really going to be driven by, um, the, the student need that we have in front of us. Um, but we do have a variety of sizes for the violins and the violas that come in, in different sizes.
Remember Ames?
Yeah, I remember what I was going to say now. Uh, and that was that, um, the MPBN had an instrument drive? I don't know if you remember.
Familiar myself.
The, the local public radio station had an instrument drive. I don't know where they ended up. So maybe you should contact them and see if we could get ahold of some of them.
Perfect. Thank you. We will do that.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Agenda item number eight is to review and potentially vote on the first read of policies A through E. Remember Boden?
Do you have anything to say or?
No.
I was waiting for your questions. So no, if you're going to make a motion, I have nothing to say.
I was just going to make a motion if everyone's all set to approve the first read of the policies listed A through E.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Remember McGlone?
Yeah. I, I did have a question more broadly, uh, about the, what would it be, D and E around the code of conduct? You know, this is something that comes up with fair amount, but I'm just curious, i- is there, do you see a way that the, that particular set of policies can or will result in sort of on the ground changes? Is it related to what we heard about previously? Okay. Yeah. If you could just say a word about that, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely. So this policy, um, which is JIC Student Code of Conduct is the one you're referring to. This policy has needed to be updated for quite some time. And I've sort of held off bringing it to the subcommittee because we were doing all the work that you, that you saw at the last meeting. So this policy reflects the, the larger body of work that you saw at the last, at the last meeting. And has been updated to do so. So the changes on the ground will be really through the larger document that you saw, but this will, this matches that in more of a policy form. Um, and then the weapons and violence in school safety, I think you said both of those, that one is an update. And what that involves as an update is it includes, um, in that policy, what qualifies as a weapon? And what's been updated is anything that's a toy that could be perceived to be, so for example, a water gun or something like that, that could be thought to be, to be a, a weapon. That was not in the policy before, and this, this draft includes that, uh, in the policy.
Thank you.
Remember Heard?
Thank you. Um, the only thing and only because my OCD is running rampant right now. Just the fact that on some of the pages, Lewiston Public Schools is like at the bottom. Are we, are we going to fix that? Sorry. It's just driving me a little crazy. Like, yeah. And I don't know if that's just because of how it was sent or that's how mine looks in the packet.
So Lewiston Public Schools should be at the bottom of each page. If it's not in the right place, it's probably because of the way that it was saved in PDF. When it goes on the website, that's not there. It would only be there if it was in a, it was in a hard copy.
Gotcha. Okay. It just looks like almost like it's a heading instead of a, do you get what I'm saying?
Yep. It, yeah, it's supposed to be just that it's a Lewiston Public, reference like Lewiston Public Schools, um, policy. But when you look on the website, you don't see that.
Anyone else? There, uh, you already made the motion and you seconded it. Uh, all in favor? It's unanimous. Agenda item number nine is to receive and approve the superintendent's contract.
So just to share a little context, I know, um, had conversations with the committee leading up to now. It is about two years out, which is when we typically negotiate and get things going. I think, I do think it's important to note that, uh, there's been some recruitment efforts, but my, my heart is here. And I know we have a lot of work to do and I'm committed to continue to do that.
Questions, comments, discussion. Remember Ames?
Can you say that more directly, please? That very thing about recruitment. Just, sorry, that was, I know what you mean. People out there don't, I don't mean, I don't mean detail, I mean clear.
That's why we're mindful of other people's hiring processes and recruitment efforts, but yeah, I've, I've received some.
You're trying to say that you were, you had hunted and
Yes.
you've decided you'd love to stay.
Very much so. Yes.
That's what I was trying to get you to say.
Pretty aggressively by several different opportunities. So, yeah. But again, I, I still believe there's a lot of work to do and, um, I'm ready to do that.
Any other questions, comments? Remember Heard?
Sorry, this is really awkward. So I think it also needs to be said that I think as a committee, we have come to the general consensus of some, some expectations that we have of you as superintendent. Of how we would like to see things grow in the future at, with you at the helm. And so I think it also needs to be said that you kind of know what our expectations are and you understand that and you're ready to come up with kind of your own blueprint or plan of how that's going to look and how we're going to grow in the future. So it's not like we're just saying, hey, we get to keep you and that is all like, there are some things obviously that we are requiring as a committee from you in order to continue to be here and run our district.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of barriers for growth and we need to review our goals and clearly establish them and have a collaborative process around it. Cause they're, they're my goals, but they're also the committee's goals. And we've had a number of things that we've done over the last several years that haven't really been stated as goals, but things that we have put significant time and effort into. Increasing our ability to communicate, um, and, and involve parents and families from a cultural perspective. Our efforts around special education to deflect significant costs and keep our kids at home. Our work around our growing enrollments and expansion. Um, and I was going to save it for updates, but you know, graduating 337 kids last Friday night on a, what I think was a beautiful night and a wonderful celebration of their work, uh, for their families. That's, that's the work that we need to continue to do and grow. But we were also going to ask about having another, um, session that specifically around goals and structures, uh, coming up here. Next meeting.
I'd also like to add, it's kind of strange for us to be speaking about this. It's technically, it's a personnel matter. And generally we talk about these things in executive session, which we have had several sessions. This isn't just like on the agenda tonight and we're not talking about it. And, um, we've had a lot of executive sessions, um, discussing, negotiating, going back and forth. So from a public facing, it appears very sudden, but it, it wasn't a sudden process behind the scenes. Remember Boden?
I also think it should be said, um, that a five-year renewal is, um, standard for a superintendent contract. And so anything less really wasn't an option. Again, awkward. I don't, I don't know like what I can and I can't say, but I just want to say that publicly because, um, I've, you know, heard things about, well, maybe it should be less, but five years is, um, pretty standard. So.
Remember Glant?
Yes, I, I also wanted to, um, elaborate on the graduating class this year. My understanding is this is the largest class of graduates so far. So, you know, yeah, 347, um, I think that's, that's good work.
Want to note too, that we continue to build pathways to try to support students, um, but we have, we anticipate as many as 25 additional graduates at the August graduation.
Remember McGlone?
Thanks. Trying to think, you know, it is, yeah, I guess I'll repeat what others have said. It is a little strange because it's a personnel matter. Normally we talk about these and have talked about this in executive session, uh, but then we have, excuse me, have to navigate, you know, the public engagement since this is a, it's an important decision, obviously, uh, for the school committee to, to extend a contract for any superintendent, uh, you know, I would say it's one of the most important things we do. Glad that the contract negotiations went in the direction that they did. Uh, again, to kind of restate, you know, I, I don't want the, the initial part about, you know, our current superintendent being recruited from others, that wasn't, I, I suppose met with passively from the committee. I think, uh, we all did not want to be hiring a new superintendent right now. I guess I'll just put it that way. Right? And I'm optimistic that we can move, uh, in a good direction, I think, uh, by renewing this, renewing this contract. I do want to say though, and I'm not, this is more a question for the committee members, just taking the temperature. My, my only thought was be, because this is a little strange, I mean, in that we have, it's a personal matter, we talk about it in executive sessions. But again, it is, it is an important thing that we do. And most people don't necessarily know about what's on our agenda until after it happens, unfortunately, just because that's the way it goes. I, I feel a little more comfortable if we do have a second meeting, just like we would for other significant votes on policies and so on. We do a second reading. Um, and that's not really a, uh, at least in my mind, a question of the value of, of moving forward with this, but I do think there is some value in having public input on, you know, what we want to see in the next five years from, from renewing the contract to the superintendent. Now, I don't know if that's, maybe that's not normal. Uh, again, it's kind of a unique personnel situation, but that's a thought I had. I don't know if others agree or disagree. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Remember Boden?
I mean, I, our agenda was released on Thursday like it always was, and this was on the agenda for the public to see and to show up tonight and comment. Um, so I don't know that we need to have another meeting for that purpose. I don't know. I understand where you're coming from. I understand what you're trying to say, but I also think that, you know, this agenda had just as much time as any other agenda had out in the public eye to garner attention. So that's, that's how I feel about it. I don't, I don't really see why we would delay it further. Um, this is something that's been in the works for a couple of months now. So that's just my thoughts on it.
I also consee your point of, um, wanting to like solicit feedback from the community. Um, I just don't know that, I think that feedback's going to come regardless. If we vote tonight or not, we will receive feedback. And I don't know that it's going to change anyone's vote on it. So whether we vote on it tonight or we vote on it in a week, we'll still get the feedback regardless, and it's not going to change the outcome. So I don't, I mean, from my perspective anyway. So I don't know. I see your point, but I also see the other point as well. Remember Glant?
I agree with, uh, member Boden that, you know, um, it's, it's due process. So I, I think, I don't think we need to, to have another vote. I think tonight we should be, should be it.
Remember Heard?
Thank you. Yeah. I, Phoenix, I see your, I totally see your side of it. And I think it's, um, you have well intentions, but if we think about it, we don't give public comment on any other personnel hire, resignation. You know what I mean? That's just, there's not an opportunity really for that. And I feel like it's, this is almost awkward and kind of not following the line of what we would normally do in hiring a situation because it is personnel. So I think, again, like member Boden said, we've given them the opportunity to come if they wanted to come. And I mean, we have received some emails. So I think that's, I mean, it is what it is at this point.
Remember Ames?
I feel like, uh, the input we need is about the goals. The input we need is about what comes next. So the next meeting, which I guess we're going to have this month, uh, because of July 1st fiscal year. Would, I do want to hear what people have to say about that. And that will affect the way we go. But the, the up or down on this contract is not, is separate from that, I think.
Remember Glant?
Maybe that's what we could do. Maybe we could, uh, vote on the contract tonight. And then if that's what people want is, is public comment on expectations or goals or that sort of thing. I, I can agree with that.
I intend to open it up for public comment with the caveat that it can't be personnel discussions because we don't do that. It's in our rule. Remember Heard?
Yeah, maybe like, uh, you've done like the town hall things for the budget, like same kind of idea for this kind of thing where it's Q and A, you give some information, people ask, you kind of go back and forth where it's, you know, you're engaging with everyone and, because public comment, you really can't engage with anybody. So if you do more of like a town hall type thing, you might get more people show up, better feedback, more engagement.
Suzanne?
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to speak from the HR director perspective on this. If we wait and do a vote at a later date, it's going to throw us into the next fiscal year. Um, so logistically, for payroll and HR processing purposes, that's going to be a bit of a struggle. Um, it's going to require a lot of reset on, on the salary side for his table in particular and his benefits. So that's kind of a, a little bit of a strategic issue. I also wanted to point out, and most of you kind of said this, our collective bargaining units, we're, we're held to confidentiality standards when we're negotiating those. So it seems like this is the same type of applicable thing and not his contract would be negotiated confidentially as it has been. With an opportunity for comment on, on future projects, but I don't think an opportunity to comment on his individual contract would be appropriate. Thank you.
And his contract is public once it's established anyways, correct?
It is. And anyone could file a FOIA request if they, if they wanted it. Um, but I, I don't think that a
Discussion.
Discussion would be appropriate.
Thank you. Anything else from the committee? Are there any members of the public that would like to speak? Should I read the part about personnel from the, the script? Or do you feel like you're aware of what you can and cannot talk about?
I'm aware.
Okay, great. Thank you.
My objection here is, why was, you guys have had months on this. We've had four days to read for you what you guys think. The lack of transparency on this contract is amazing. There is no goals in this contract to set. Let's set some standards. Phoenix keeps talking about setting goals. It should be in his contract. This is what we want the school, our school system to produce. Increase our kids, bring it, you know, safer. They're not in there. The lack of transparency is amazing. Why is this, if you're going to have another meeting this month, why not wait, as Phoenix said, till the next meeting to improve this? We had four days. If someone did not read the agenda, they have no idea it's coming. You guys have known for how long this contract was coming and just popped it in after the school year's over. You guys have known for how long this contract was coming and just popped it in after the school year's over. But you'll make your own calls. Because the interesting thing was the terms of this contract have been discussed prior to tonight's meeting. Details reviewed by legal staff and the HR director and are available. We've had four days. You've had how long? Now, while this is not a personal attack, I looked at the policy on nepotism in your, by the city, school system. I'm confused at how Superintendent Langlis's wife is allowed to work in the system, as he said, as a coach. And I'll quote the policy to you all. It is the policy of the school committee not to employ personnel to the staff of the school unit when the candidate is a member of the immediate family of a school committee member or the superintendent. As far as I can see, that is clearly being broken. I guess we could have the policy reviewed by legal staff and the HR director and have them come back and explain it to us all because that'd be really interesting to hear why it's being allowed. How many other people have immediate family member working under them in the school system? Do we know? Have a good evening.
Generally, we don't do a back and forth, but I did want to acknowledge that part of the negotiation process, when a superintendent went from interim superintendent to a permanent superintendent, we did consult with legal and we did put in place a nepotism waiver because the, he wasn't the superintendent when his wife was working in the district and she's never directly reported to him. And all of those details have been managed through legal several years ago. And we do have other people in the district that are related in some way or another. They do not report directly to each other, and there are nepotism waivers in place for those as well. Yes, Katie?
Good evening. My name's Katie Krantz, and I'm in Ward Seven. I'm also an LPS staff member. As far as Mr. Langlis's contract goes, it's been out there. Everybody knew what was coming up this evening. Whether we vote, well, I should say whether you members vote on this, this evening or not, everybody's going to have their comments. I personally feel as a parent and as a staff member, Mr. Langlis has done a fabulous job being able to maintain what is needed for our school system. So I personally look at the fact that holding off on, we need to do another meeting, we need to go behind closed doors. I don't feel that there is a need for that. I personally feel that what you're doing right now by having an open discussion in front of all of us, that's what needs to be done. I like when you do that. It makes us feel like we're part of the discussion and being able to hear what's being said. I one hundred percent feel that going ahead tonight, putting a vote in for it, needs to be done. Because like I said, no matter what you do, you're going to get the comments of your yes people, your no people, and they're going to post it no matter what. So my vote would be, if I could, to one hundred percent vote for it and don't hold off on it.
Thank you. Just wanted to say our visible timer has died, so I'm going to be using just the timer on my phone for this.
David Rackmills, Ward One resident taxpayer, advocate for transparency and good governance. This isn't it. I'm not going to comment on whether the, I think the superintendent is doing a great job or a terrible job because that's not allowed. So, but what you're doing tonight should not be allowed. Because there may be, I don't know, maybe a hundred people, less than one percent of the Lewiston population knows that this is happening tonight. Nobody goes to see what the agenda is. If the superintendent has several more years left on his contract, nobody is thinking that there's going to be a new contract happening tonight. You need to let the citizens of Lewiston know this is happening and have a say. I don't understand how the fiscal year can start in the middle of month. If we're having a meeting in the beginning of June, there's another meeting at the end of June. I don't understand what the complications would be of postponing this for another meeting. If you vote and approve this contract tonight, you're doing a disservice to your constituents and to the community and to the children of Lewiston. You need to table this. Maybe you can't table it for a year because of the pressures, the hiring pressures that the recruitment situation is doing, but you need to table it at least until the next meeting. Thanks.
Just the first question. So I'll be honest, I didn't notice the agenda till last night. It's been a busy week and it's been a busy school year. So saying that we had it, you know, till Thursday, that's, it's not enough time. At least with the city administrative search, we like know months ahead of time that this decision is going to be made and locking someone in for five years, like four days is not enough time for the public. I did have a question about it. I know this is more rhetorical. It does say that it's going to be for the school year twenty-four, twenty-five. So is that going to be like, the pay is going to be retroactive payout? I was, I was wondering that. I do feel like you guys should talk more about the terms themselves, which is public. You should mention that it's going to be for a salary of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars per year. Two thousand and twenty-one, back when I was in the council, it was a hundred and thirty-five thousand. That's what, a forty percent increase, fifty-five thousand dollar increase in just the last few years. That increase is more than I make this year, my salary. So I just, maybe you guys should do more time to speak and tell the public about the numbers in the contract itself before you guys vote on it. So I think if people knew more what was in it, you'd probably have more people speaking out and giving their thoughts on it. And it's not my place to say whether you should or shouldn't approve it. I don't want to do that. I just want to say as far as like transparency goes and getting the public on board, like, listen, whether you guys vote yes or no, you want the public to be behind you. And if you want them to be behind you, you need to get them involved and let them know what's going on and why you're making the decision and what that decision is. So tabling it makes the most sense. I can tell you someone from the member of the public, four days or for me, the, probably about twenty-two hours at this point that I've known about this, it just hasn't been enough time. So that's my ask. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Any other members of the public want to speak? We will come back to the committee. Member Harriman, Councilor Harriman?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention, so as a member of the city council and then also on the negotiations committee on the school committee, I've had a hand in many different contracts, mostly for bargaining units, a couple for, you know, individual employees. And this has followed the same process that all of those have. The, there's a comment about there should be goals or standards in the contract. I haven't seen that in an employment contract ever. It's more about the terms of, of your employment, basically. I believe also the, you know, while the salary might seem like a lot of money, it's still well below market rate. And I believe, I believe as we were going through this process, the superintendent in Portland, I think they make more than that, but they have something like five assistant superintendents instead of one. So, and it's a similarly sized district to ours. So I think if we were to, you know, if we were to go the other option and try to find a new superintendent, we'd end up paying more and it would just be a large disruption to the district. I also think that Jake is doing a good job, so I, I don't see any reason to change votes here. As far as transparency, this has followed the same processes as other agenda items. And I, I mean, if people don't, if people don't care enough about something to pay attention to it, then that's just, that's just how it goes. We see that with the school vote every year. Something like, what, three or four percent of people, I think it was a little higher this year, voted. Lots of people, they just don't have an opinion on it, so they don't vote. Yeah, I really, I think we should go ahead and approve this tonight, and I don't really see a reason to wait. We have negotiated this, you know, in, in executive session. And I feel like both sides were, you know, worked in good faith, and I think we're at a good point to go ahead and approve this tonight.
Thank you. Member Boden?
Thank you. So I do want to say this is the, I believe the first superintendent contract that I've actually been a part of. I think you, your last one was signed in what, twenty-one? Is that right? Or sorry?
I think it was twenty-two.
Twenty-two?
Yeah, it's for five years till twenty-seven.
Okay. I honestly, I don't remember if I was a part of that or not. I don't, I don't think I was. Yeah. So, so this was all new to me. And I will say when the, the discussion came up, I was surprised because I thought it was soon too. But, you know, I just needed to get a lesson on when contracts open for superintendents. And, you know, Jake was super transparent, was like, no, 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 this is like when this happens typically. And I do believe him. I don't think we're trying to pull one over on the public, but, you know, I, I didn't love the timing of it and I was very transparent with the superintendent on that. Because, you know, this, this came up, what, in March? In March, in the middle of budget talks, and it was, it was a hard pill to swallow. But also, like, we've been very transparent tonight to let you know, like, he was being headhunted pretty strongly. And, you know, our job as a school committee is to hire the superintendent and to renew the superintendent's contract. So that's what we have been doing behind the scenes in our full capacity, the way that we're supposed to be doing it. Again, I didn't love when it came up, and I was very vocal about that, but it came up and here we are. And I'm comfortable voting on it tonight because I think, I think we've had enough discussion in our executive sessions about this, that we are in a good spot, so. I apologize to anyone in the public who wanted to speak, who didn't know about this. But I guess just kind of keep an eye on Thursdays for those agendas when they come out.
Member Heard?
Thank you. So I just want to say, I echo the same statements as Member Boden. I think it was definitely a shock for us. But I also want the general public to know that it wasn't, like Superintendent Langlis just came to us and said, I want to stay, this is what I want. And we were like, here you go, you can have the whole keys to the city. Like, there were negotiations, there were things that we said no to, there was things that we said we can live with part of this, but not this. And so it wasn't, I feel like we all gave our opinions and our thoughts, and it was well thought out and well discussed, and we hemmed and hawed, and we were angry for maybe a little while. I don't know if the word's angry, but surprised, I guess, is kind of, I guess, the more of the word I'm looking for. And, you know, I think also too, sometimes people forget, but Jake pays taxes just like the rest of us. He is one of the very few admin in, at Dingley that actually live in the city of Lewiston. So his taxes will go up no matter what, his salary goes up. So he is my neighbor and our taxes are pretty high. So I think it's also important to remind people of that, like, he's not just living in, outside of our district or outside of our city, paying smaller taxes somewhere else. Like, this will affect him also. So I don't think anything was rushed or, I don't think we overlooked anything. I think it was very well thought out, and I do apologize again if the public thinks that we didn't or we're not doing them justice, but I think that we have, we have done justice here, so.
Member Gallant?
I would like to comment that I agree with what Counselor or Member Harriman had stated that there is a process and we followed that process. And as in other municipalities, other city councils, we follow the due process. So I feel very comfortable in voting tonight. And, you know, I think we did, we did just, we did just.
I think it's important, I hope I say this the right way. I think it's important to acknowledge our newly voted on public comment policy, which mentions that discussions of individuals that are employed by the district can't happen during public comment, whether it's positive or negative. And so there seems to be like a request that we delay this so that we can get more feedback from the community. But the feedback that we would need to receive from the community is how we move forward. And we receive that willingly, openly, regardless of if we vote tonight. The feedback that it sounds like some people want to give wouldn't be appropriate at public comment, whether we vote tonight or we vote in two weeks or we, if we have five more meetings about this, that, that kind of public comment still wouldn't be appropriate. So if people want to send us emails with their suggestions for how we move forward, their suggestions for what they want Jake to do, things that should be in his job description, where things like goals would probably land more in a job description than in a contract. If people want to send us that stuff or share that with us, that, we want to hear that. That's, we want to create a path moving forward. But anything that's personal pertaining to him, his employment, that kind of feedback isn't appropriate at public comment. So I understand the need to let more people in the public know that this is going on, but we can receive that feedback, the appropriate feedback regardless if we vote tonight or not. Member McGlone?
Yeah, I'd say, I think I am persuaded and maybe understanding a bit better from some of the, one theme of the comments, that there is kind of a distinction that we have to make between the person and the position. And to be honest, this is something I've always struggled with a little bit and, and I guess still need to learn more as a committee member just when we do discuss any contract, you know, collective bargaining agreements primarily in executive session, but then we hold a public vote on it. And it's always a little unclear to me. It's even more unclear to me, or it was at least coming into this, what exactly the public engagement can be or should be with this type of thing. And I think I am understanding a bit better that there is a difference between, you know, we, we do have to have more of the discussion around who the right people should be and some of the more specifics around the contract terms, I think, in executive session. Although now certainly the, the contract terms are, are public, they're part of the agenda. Which is different from talking about, okay, what do we want of the position? Regardless of who's in it, such as goals for, for the future. And it's a little, you know, it, it's a little, superintendent's a bit of a different category because it is, in some ways, rightly or wrongly, kind of a manifestation of the whole, the district as a whole. But I do think it does make more sense to me as we're talking about it that this is, the up or down on the contract itself is a little different from going forward with, you know, getting, getting all the input from various forms that we want in terms of, you know, what we hope to achieve over the next coming years, what we hope the superintendent helps us achieve and so on. So that's my current thought after this discussion.
And also to reiterate something that Scott, Counselor Harriman had said earlier. In the ten years that I've been on the school committee, I've worked under three superintendents now or served under three superintendents, and this is the standard process for renewing a contract for a superintendent. So it, it may not feel transparent to the public, but it's how it's prescribed, it's how it's supposed to be. And that's, it's not necessarily comfortable for us either. It's, it is how it is. Member Eames?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract as it is presented in the agenda. Is that an okay way to put it? Okay. I would.
I'd like to second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Agenda item number ten is a report from the school committee chair. I just want to comment how wonderful graduation was Friday night. It was beautiful, the weather was beautiful, it was flawless. It was one of the best graduations that we've had. I don't have anything else to update. Number eleven is the report from the superintendent.
I touched on part of it, but yes, on Friday, we celebrated three hundred and thirty-seven graduates. And as I mentioned, we anticipated another twenty-one from the high school and four from next step in August. So hopefully that all pans out. I'd love to see even go a little higher if possible. Some other things in the news. We are looking at Job Corps hitting a pause funding-wise, June thirtieth. So for us, what that means is we stop referring kids and helping them with their applications to go to a program that has really served a number of students in Lewiston well. But that's, that's going to be paused June thirtieth. We also received notice in the state of Maine that we have a Title I reduction of two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. That is less to do with anything federal, more to do with a internal adjustment at the state level following an audit, where they said essentially they were of the impression that we were receiving too much based on their metrics. And so this year was the correction, and that correction is two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. What we've, what we've done is, there's, there's room for waiver with unspent funds from a prior year. And so we're working through that, and we think that we can keep things whole for this year, but it's something we have to keep our eyes on for next year for sure. Also wanted to put in a plug. I don't know how this landed, but we only scheduled one meeting in June, at least on the formal calendar. And typically we would have a second one, so I wanted to. So I wanted to pitch it to the committee to do one on June 30th, which is a Monday, just before the July holidays. But that would be up to you. And if, if you are agreeable to that, again, I'd like to have a conversation about goals and structures for Lewiston Public Schools. I don't think that we necessarily solidify things that night particularly, but I think it's good to get some things going publicly so we can have more conversation about the direction of our schools. So if there's no objection from the committee, then we'll.
Would that be in a regular committee format or would it be a Q and A kind of town hall?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we can do either. We can, we can do sharing of things and then inviting comment. And we may also have some other items that we have to address too. So if, seeing no objections, we'll get that scheduled. Okay.
Is there anyone that knows right now that they can't make that or is everybody checking? 30th?
30th, it's Monday, the 30th.
At the dot, at the top in the corner where your picture is, you should be able to click on calendar. Like for the. You with all the dots, if you click on that, you should be able to open calendar. Okay. June 30th. Sounds like it's good for everyone or most everyone. You don't know yet, but.
I'll have to check.
Okay. All right.
Just double checking my notes. I think that's it. We have adult ed graduation that is tomorrow night at seven o'clock. If you're able to attend, that'd be great. If you, if you cannot, it's okay. It's usually a fun, yeah, yes, in the gym, which is much more comfortable now that we have that new HVAC system. It still can get hot, but it doesn't start hot.
Ralsap? I did want to just backtrack to the chair update. One thing that I forgot that I wanted to mention tonight. At graduation on Friday night, I was told that we had 17 students who graduated that have been identified as homeless. And I just wanted to acknowledge that because that is a lot of work for a student that's facing a lot of hardship to complete their high school diploma. And so that was something I wanted to acknowledge because I thought that was very important. Agenda item number 12 is report from the city council rep.
Thank you. So city council has a meeting tomorrow evening. Workshop starts at six o'clock and we're discussing, having another workshop on syringe service programs or needle exchange programs. I believe there will be representatives from the two that currently operate in the city, as well as I think Maine CDC, which is the licensing agency that licenses them. We're also establishing the festival zones for the summer for the, the larger, some of the larger events that we have. We do this every year with the balloon festival, the Dempsey challenge, the Liberty Festival. And it's just, it sort of establishes where they can control vendors versus, you know, where, where, where vendors can usually set up on city property. So it helps them manage their, their festival activities. So that's exciting to see the, the summer calendar coming up. And then another one that I'm kind of excited about, that we just had a, a recent addition to the agenda that El Pocho's, the restaurant that's on Lower Lisbon Street, has the opportunity to host a mariachi band on Wednesday evening. And their plan is to play outside on the sidewalk, so they need a city permit. So Wednesday evening, six to seven PM is, is what I've, when I've heard that they're.
Every Wednesday?
No, no, just this Wednesday. So assuming the vote goes through, goes favorably tomorrow, then Wednesday evening, you could probably see a mariachi band on Lisbon Street. So that's all I've got.
Sounds fun. Thank you. Do we have any updates from subcommittees? Member Bowden?
Yep. So negotiations continues to meet. We are towards the end wrapping up with our attack negotiations. And we just started with our food management negotiations. But I think they're going to go pretty quickly. So we are about to wrap up for the year.
Any other subcommittees meet? Nope. All right. Agenda item number 14, any community announcements?
I just, I just want to say one more time, graduation was very cool on Friday night. And I just, I just thought it just went so smoothly and I'm super proud of all of the graduates that we had here in Lewiston. So I know I'm kind of like echoing what you guys have already said, but it was super cool. And I'll say it again, I was blown away by the young lady that got up on the keyboard and sang to us. That was incredible. So congratulations to the class of 2025.
Yeah, that was Maria. She's, I mean, lights out, really next level. We may see her album at some point somewhere. She's really that good. I also just want to remind people that Friday, the sixth is Eid and so there's no school and observance of Eid. And the last day of school for students is the 13th. And the last day for teachers is the 16th.
Any other community announcements? Counselor Herrmann?
Sorry, this is kind of going back to the subcommittee. I wonder if we could get an update from, about the multicultural subcommittee and the safety and behavior subcommittee. Doesn't have to be tonight, but maybe at our next meeting. Just because I feel like those are important committees that we should be supporting and just want to see what, where their progress is.
Thank you. Had an update to, I didn't think our meeting was going to be, I thought we were going to have a meeting before now. So I had a community announcement to share, but it's happening tonight. The youth advisory council is having the Heart of Lewiston festival, but it's happening right now as we speak. But I had intended to share that at an earlier meeting, but we didn't have an earlier meeting because of vacation. Agenda item number 15 is future agenda items. We'll keep whittling away at the list we have. Member Bowden?
I mean, I guess I'll just bring it up again since we had Luke Jensen here tonight speaking. I felt frustration from him and, you know, like he said, he gave his resignation. And I would love to just, like what, what's going on? Like, is there, is there something we can dive into to see what's going on to make, you know, one of our teachers feel like this and feel the need to come talk to us in such frustration? Like, I, I just feel like there needs to be a discussion and I don't even know what that discussion is. Like just getting teacher feedback, but how do we do that? How do we, how do we get teachers to want to engage with us and let us know how they're feeling? So, yeah.
Member Glant?
Yeah, on that note, is there an exit interview for retiring or resigning teachers? Okay, because maybe, is that, is that something we can look at as a, as a committee? Those exit interview notes or I don't know what's.
So we, we offer them in person and with a QR survey if someone doesn't want to do it in person.
Okay.
We offer both.
Can we, can we, do we have, as a committee, do we have access to those?
I could take a look at what's in there.
I think that would be good for us to know.
Agenda item number 16 is to enter into executive session to conduct student A disciplinary hearing title 20A10019 and title 14056B. So moved, thank you. Seconded by Member Bowden, all in favor? Unanimous, the school committee is in executive session at 7:12.